Right hand and repeat after me. Um, I.
I.
State your name.
I'm Michelle Isom.
I Scott House.
A duly elected councillor for the city of Halsey.
A duly elected.
City of Halsey.
Do hereby solemnly swear that I will support.
To hereby solemnly swear to support.
The Constitution of the United States and the state of Oregon.
The Constitution of the United States and the state of Oregon.
And the Charter and ordinances of the city of Halsey.
And the Charter and ordinances of the city of Halsey.
That I will faithfully perform my duties.
That I will faithfully perform my duties.
Halsey.
As councillor for the city of Halsey.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Hi.
Hi.
State your name please.
Jerry Lockenberger.
The duly elected mayor for the city of Halsey.
The duly elected mayor for the city of Halsey.
Do hereby solemnly swear that I will support.
I do hereby solemnly swear I will support.
The Constitution of the United States and the state of Oregon.
The Constitution of the United States and the state of Oregon.
And the Charter and ordinances of the city of Halsey.
And the Charter and ordinances of the city of Halsey.
That I would. Duties.
Will faithfully perform my duties.
As mayor for the city of Halsey.
As mayor for the city of Halsey.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God. President, believe in my voice. Hillary, please call the roll.
Mayor Lockenberger.
Here.
Councillor Isom.
Here.
Councillor the House.
Here.
Councillor President Lorenz. Councillor McMillan.
Here.
Councillor Romer.
Here.
Councillor Strauss.
Here.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance is to the United States of America. One patient under God indivisible. I want to thank all of you who took time to attend tonight. We appreciate your time. Any guests who are physically present need to fill out the meeting sign in sheet near the door over there. We're running a hybrid meeting again tonight to allow those who want to attend remotely to do so. To cut down on background noise and feedback, remote attendees should mute themselves while not speaking. Audience members may unmute themselves to speak during citizen comments. For sign the agenda into consent agenda. Any councillor may request to remove an item from the consent agenda that they wish to have discussed enacted outside the consent agenda. If there is no question made, the council may approve all items on the consent agenda with a second motion. Entertainer motion.
I move that the governing body, city of Halsey, approve the business items in the consent agenda as submitted. Second.
On favor.
No.
I opposed. Question Gary's. My next report is the next item. Um, are there any questions, comments, concerns?
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There you are.
Oh my gosh. Hey, let's get this over with quick before I lose you. Uh, yeah, so I'm extremely sorry I couldn't be there tonight. I had some stuff pop up last minute, so. Uh, I hate doing Zoom, but uh unfortunately this is how I have to do it. Um, and I felt like I needed to be there tonight because there's some stuff on the report. I thought you guys might have questions about. Um, so one thing you'll see we're over thirty eight and a half hours. If you go through the report, there's a couple of investigations which caused that. Um, first off, we arrested two folks in regards to some thefts from the Halsey market. One was an employee. And then we arrested a, a person related to the employee for accepting the stolen property that he was stealing. So super interesting investigation, but stuff like that takes a lot of time with interviews and going through video surveillance and. Um, just trying to get all of our facts straight before we start conducting interviews. Um, we were doing super well, you guys, up until uh, December twenty second in regards to property crimes. We've talked about how like property crimes all over the county are increasing by a lot. Not so much Halsey. Um, this month we had uh two calls where some vehicles were broken into. Um, again, we talk about valuables, especially during the holidays. And unfortunately, uh, one vehicle that was broken into had several firearms that were stolen from it. Um, this, that's a, a pretty big burden on us trying to track down those firearms. And in regards to reports like that. Um. Our reports are a lot lengthier with who those reports get routed to and how we go about reporting those stolen firearms. Uh, we deal with insurance companies, so. Um, valuables, please keep them out of sight. Um, or just don't even put them in your car to begin with and always double check to make sure your vehicles are locked. Um, and towards the end of the month, uh, a deputy, I'm gonna, I tried to get him to talk tonight, conducted a traffic stop in Halsey for a moving violation and ended up getting uh several pounds of narcotics. You might see a press release on that coming soon. Um, I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that uh that is not a local to Halsey. Uh, he was from Eugene passing through, uh, so that is nothing um that we need to worry about as far as uh that this stuff is, you know, setting up shop here. Um, this, this was not a local pat passing through highway ninety nine. Um. Any, anybody have questions on anything that I did not touch on or, or maybe that I did touch on that you might want some more answers to?
Anyone?
I just know on the um break ins, I know of some that were not reported either. I think there's a lot going on and even as recently as the last three, four days.
Yeah, s- super, super, super frustrating. Um, so. In Harrisburg specifically, uh, we had numerous break ins, uh, vehicle break ins in December. And the only reason we find out about them is because we monitor some Facebook groups. And we actually had deputies going door to door based on posts that were made on Facebook asking if they were a victim to a crime because people are not calling in. And it's, I can't tell you how important it is. We have to know this stuff if we. It's gonna help drastically if we catch somebody with stolen property from one case. That's great. If we can catch them and tie them to ten others, that's fantastic. And that helps the district attorney in regards of prosecution in making these folks go away. Um, and so if it's a phone call, that's fine. If you don't want to be bothered by us showing up, making a scene, that's fine. If you don't want to report for insurance because your twenty dollar Walmart sunglasses got stolen, understand. But you could still call and say, hey, just want to let you know this happened. Perfect. It'll take us five minutes of our time. We've documented it. Uh, we have maps that will show up where crimes are occurring. And so if we do catch somebody maybe in the area, we can go through our mapping program and say, hey, there's a car breaking here, 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 and here. Um, so we don't necessarily have time to be tracking down Facebook leads. Um, but unfortunately, s- and some of the smaller towns, we're seeing that as a pattern. Maybe they don't think law enforcement can do much, but um, trust me, we, we would love to try. Uh, we just have to have the info uh to pursue those leads, so please, please call us.
That's good to know. I always thought that it was more of it, but was like a valued item.
No. No.
Twenty dollar sunglasses, so that's good to know.
And so the second, um, I'm not sure what page it's on is towards the, and I believe it was Christmas Eve when a vehicle was entered and you'll see in the notes that nothing of value was taken. Just by opening the door, that is a crime. They don't have to take anything. Let's just say you were unloading groceries and shut the door and you come out the next morning. Your door is wide open, but nothing was taken. I would still like to know about that because that tells me somebody tried. Maybe they got spooked and they didn't have a chance to take something, but based off that one door being open with nothing taken, that still gives us opportunities to go to some neighbors and say, hey, I see you have video surveillance cameras. Can we take a peek at those real quick? And stuff develops that way. I've, w- we've made huge cases on very small things before, so. Um, like I said, we don't need to show up and take photographs and fingerprint and do DNA swabs. Well, we, you can simply call and just say, hey, I'd like to talk with a deputy about this and just make sure they're aware. That's as simple as it gets. It's, it's no longer than five minutes, I promise.
Very good to know. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
I don't believe so.
All right. Well, I'm glad this worked. I, I'm glad this worked. Hopefully we don't have to Zoom ever again.
Thank you much. Be safe.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you guys. Thanks, Sarah, too. So next is citizen comments. It was time for interested citizens and anyone in the audience to address the council on any item of concern. Please leave your comments for about three minutes and please start by introducing yourself and stating your address. Anyone? No, we're down the line. Going once. Going twice. Moving on. And this item is a report to council. And start with the employer report with Hillary, please.
The Oregon Community Foundation Bicycle Facilities Grant that truly applied for when she first got here. We did get that, so that will be for new bicycle facilities at both city hall and the park. Um, and who's interestingly a bicycle pump. I didn't know you could do that.
Oh.
Cool. Um, there are four citizens who've opened on the budget committee this year. We've started recruiting to fill them. Um, budget committee members serve for your terms. If you know anybody who's interested, it's relatively small time commitment because it only needs a couple of times in the spring. And knowing where the money is and where it goes and how it works is a really good way to, to know some stuff about the city, so. Um, I try to encourage people to do it. We've had a full roster of citizens for the last couple of years. It's been really great. Um, hopefully some of those people who've done it over the last three years will reapply to do it as well. Applications are due on March sixth and they're available here at city hall and I think also on the website. Um, we made our transition full page billing um this month. There were, you know, little tweaks that we're working on to make it better. Um, so be patient with us while we further refine that. And um this coming bill, I think we're good, is going to be our first one for getting the newsletter out with the bill. That's the goal. Um, third Thursday in December was really well attended. We got several bags of toys for Toys for Tots. Um, we might be starting to pick up a little inertia.
Yeah.
So, and if you're doing the January one, talk to Maddie about what you want us to advertise and what we need to buy. And um, if you're not signed up for one, uh, check in with Maddie and she can help you sign up. Send the guy the email last week and have her back. Project that's paid with this uh mall cities allotment grant will happen this summer. Um, the RFP will go out by the end of the month. City day is the twenty fifth and the mayor has now signed up to go with me. Is there anybody else who'd like to go? Okay. And then um, infrastructure funding, so the safe drinking water revolving loan fund. That's the well one. Um, OHA released their list. We were ranked very low, not in the funded category, which was extremely disheartening. Um, and also they've now applied that same, that same median household income that blocks the state funding because the infrastructure funds um from the bill act are also federal funds. So we are not in a disadvantaged community status. Um, I had a couple of encouraging conversations both with Senator Hayden staff and with Representative Gate. Um, we may be able to get a direct capital ask through the state legislature. If that happens, that would be a real blessing because it's all granted at that point. We wouldn't be taking out a loan. Um, I, I don't know, all the funds are always in demand, but we have some books that will try it for us, so. And I'm investigating all other options, but, but that would be our best one at this point. Um. Question, I don't know who signed up to host third Thursday in April. But would you be opposed to our combining that with an Arbor Day celebration?
It's a good idea.
Think anyone who signed up for that one?
Randy and I are signed.
Oh, you are?
Yeah, yeah, we love it. Yeah, something great. No, I want to do, uh, it sounds like a wonderful idea.
I don't know who signed up for March, but Julie is working on an emergency preparedness workshop kind of a thing.
I'm signed up for March, so.
We can do it if you're not interested, but if you're interested, would you like that to be part of your third Thursday in March?
Um, yeah, that's.
I think it's Councillor Strauss and Councillor House from March. Okay.
That's good to me.
Yeah.
That was awesome.
For March, I'm. Um, an emergency preparedness workshop. And then um, I hope you remember her, Julia, who she's going to talk to us about the parks committee and, and that project.
Uh, just have a few updates from the citizen parks committee. Um, we were able to hold three meetings at the end of twenty twenty two. Um, in those meetings, um, we were able to identify areas to renovate and develop Halsey Park, uh, parks. Um, and the committee was in recess in December and so right now I'm working with the way to work out feasibility um, and cost estimates for what the committee recommended. And then going alongside that, Oregon Parks and Recreation uh, will open their twenty twenty three grant cycle in a very short amount of time and I will be attending one of their uh grant writing workshops.
Awesome.
Thank you.
What were some of the top three things that the committee was looking at?
Um, I think a lot of the focus was on uh what needs to be done in the memorial parks. They're looking at the sidewalk, that's number one uh area of focus. And then possibly looking at a playground and upgrading uh the basketball court too.
Thank you. Anything else? Again, moving on with Andy.
Yeah, can you hear me?
We can.
Perfect. Uh, so here's my report for December. Um, on the water side, we did our annual uh SOC, VOC and nitrate samples or uh and uh well ninety eight raw water samples. And the consumer confident report was completed and sent off. Uh, discharge uh at the lagoon is off and running. We uh discharged about ten million gallons for December. Uh, the level of the ponds are about six point two feet. Our goal is to get it down to about three point five feet by the end of April. And DQ's got some extra monitoring that we've been doing on the receiving stream at the muddy creeks. Um, they're having us do some ammonia sample, alacrity, pH and temperatures. And this like, this is a information gathering for um, our new permit that they're working on. So they've been working on that for probably five years or more. But uh they're requiring us to do those kind of uh extra monitoring. Um, of course, we uh, some of the times we spent on the streets and whatnot was uh Christmas lights, city hall, library and decorated tobacco. Um, we laid sixty foot of twelve inch drain pipe on the five hundred block of Sixth Street. And while we were there, we cleaned the, the ditches in the surrounding area. Um, there's been some shingles falling off of the city hall. So um, me and Hillary have been talking about um, where I am in the process of getting quotes for uh replacing the roof. Um, just in the last um storm that we had. Um, we had some more shingles come off and the contractor that was doing that was uh shared with me that there's other shingles that are eventually probably going to uh come off. Um, so. Um, we're gathering numbers for that and probably going to add that for the next budgets uh cycle. Um, looking closer at the building, you know, and that there's some rotting going on around the seals of uh on the trim, on around the windows and the fascia boards. So I think that uh when we gather all this information and, and costs, we can add that to our next budget cycle. Uh, other works that we've been doing, there's a, down in, in the bottom floor of city hall, there's a little closet cubby. And we've been uh making a, the, a custom door that's down there. We took the old doors that were from the library now, saved those. We've got brackets and railing that were from the original uh depot, which is city hall now. We saved those and um, we're, we're uh making a nice little door that covers that area. Um, in the park, we hauled four loads of, of uh leaves from the park. And we did go pick up the vector truck today. The transmission is um completed and uh the only thing we're waiting for is a gauge that we can have on the transmission so we know uh the temperature of the transmission. So maybe we can monitor that if anything starts to act up again, but it was under warranty and so it was a no cost to us. You have any questions? Did you hear my report?
Some of the kind of sort of, yeah.
It was great.
Thank you for everything.
It was wonderful.
It was.
Well, is there any questions?
Nope.
Perfect. All right. Have a good evening.
You too. Thank you, Andy.
I told it to make you. It's, it is now. It's catching. Thought to do.
Maybe for Sarah. Maybe.
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me?
Well, hi, Sarah.
Awesome. Good evening. Thanks for letting me join you virtually this evening. So for December in the library, our daily threshold count was over five and a half people per day. A hundred and four patrons came in last month. We had our Caroling Insider event last month as well and over twenty five people came. I absolutely love. We had our Carling Insider event last month as well and over twenty-five people came. I absolutely loved it and plan on doing it next year. The sleepover at the library will be this Friday. I'm asking anyone who wants to come to, to call me to register and then I'll give them all the details. Um, let's see, I finished going through all of our book donations. We had so many, which was fantastic. But what that means is whatever I did not bring into the library is now sitting in stacks in the bookmobile. So I'm looking for a way to kind of unload the books in the bookmobile before something happens to them with moisture, so. I'll, I'll have a chat with Hillary this week about possibly inviting local teachers to come and. Have a look through the bookmobile and take whatever they'd like for their personal collection or for a collection for their classroom. And I'm open to ideas if y'all have any. Let's see, I've weeded through the books uh from children's fiction and nonfiction and adult fiction. I'm still going through the adult nonfiction and the juniors and young adult books. And once I'm done with that, I'd like to plan to buy new books for the whole library, probably by the end of February. And I'm giving it a bit of a facelift in terms of organization and appearance. Um, all superficial, but something I'm excited about. And then Billy happened to come into the library, I think when we were chatting about Christmas lights and was like, hey, we ought to get rid of this old heater. And then you could put more books in here. And I was like, wait, what did you say? Yes, thank you very much, Billy, but I would love to add a new bookshelf where the old heater is. And I could probably add two to three hundred bucks for adult nonfiction, which is completely. Uh, slammed, which is, would be fantastic. I would absolutely love, love, love to do that. So I would put that on the agenda to. Um, do that before the beginning of summer if possible, but that would be great. And in terms of our uh rotating artists, Alice Tesamore, who is a watercolor artist, will be installing her paintings this Wednesday. And they'll be up through the end of March before we have a photographer coming in and displaying her work. So that's what's going on at the library. Um, it's been a lot of fun. I thought it'd be really quiet this winter, but actually it's been quite busy, so it's been a lot of fun. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Actually, I do have a question. How are you finding these artists?
Oh, so um Hillary gave me the idea of going over to the Brownsville Art Gallery. And so initially I met artists uh that way. And then it's amazing, this small town world that I've been introduced to, but once you start talking to people. Um, then I started getting calls and emails like, hey, I heard you're doing a rotating art exhibit. Would you be willing to look at my work? Um, and so it's grown that way. So the next artist I have coming in, I think the last two have been kind of local Brownsville Eugene. Um, and then the next artist, the photographer will be, is she's from Corvallis. And then I found another artist for the last three months who is from Portland. Um, so I think word is just spreading. We're, and that's fantastic. I, I initially thought I wanted to do this for a year. And if you all are open, I'd love to keep it as sort of a permanent rotating art exhibit that the Halsey Library is known for.
Yeah, I think it's an awesome idea. We have a bunch of shaking heads. Yes, yes.
Okay, good.
Any questions, comments? Thank you very much, Sarah.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is council reports and. And we're gonna have one if you can. She's not feeling all that hot. We have the Centralman School District.
I don't have much. I've been on break and I've been slammed at work, so haven't paid attention to anything. Okay. So, no, and their meeting's not this month, isn't until, I think that he said the twenty-third or something. It's like an off month for them, so. I don't have anything.
Randy?
Yeah, I attended this new act meeting online. It was long and seemed pretty uneventful. Not a whole lot's going on that pertained to, pertained to Halsey, I don't think, but. Um, they discussed the twenty-three to twenty-five stiff discretionary grant within the Cascade West region, which is twenty-eight million dollars this cycle. Kind of talked about the criteria, the, the choosing criteria, I guess, for, you know, who's gonna get the money. Um, they didn't make a decision at the time because there was some stuff up in the air, I guess. I think they're gonna be doing that in the next week or two. Um, normally they just do every other month, I think it is, and they decided to do a meeting this month just to, to do that part, to decide. Because they're running up against the end of uh. Their, their timeline, I guess. Um, they were talking about changing their. Requirements, I guess, like how many people are on it, how many representatives and stuff. Because they haven't been able to get a forum since February of twenty-two. Which is crazy. Uh, because it sounded like there was a lot of people there. It seemed like there was a pretty decent amount. I think some of the problem is that they have a meeting, in Albany, then they have a meeting. I, I don't remember where, maybe Corvallis or something. Um, maybe that's why, I don't know. They were able to get a forum last month, though, because they made a phone call. They phoned a friend who got a forum. But they just had, I think they just had to vote to approve the minutes for the last, you know, two months. Um, there was a few other things, but nothing a whole lot really, really going on. That's what I got.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
The next item on the agenda is new business and the first one is appointing a council president. Andy.
Oh, that's interesting. And isn't here.
Yeah.
So you can either appoint him because he's not able to defend himself.
Well, I'm up for voluntold.
Or you can, you know, appoint somebody else if they want to take a spin at it.
I, I think he would be up for it, but I don't want to. Push it on it. Know what I mean?
Do you want to say that till next month?
Um. Yeah, let's. If it's that, okay with you. Want to wait and, when council president next month or do you want to vote for somebody? Other than Ken or voluntold Ken?
I'm good with waiting.
Yeah, yeah, it's fine.
Yeah.
Sounds good to me. Well, that was easy. Next item on the agenda is the appointing a budget officer for fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four. If Hillary would be so kind as. Eliminate.
There is no requirement to do this in the charter, but. It is part of the state of Oregon budgeting process to, and a budget officer. The budget officer prepares a draft of the budget that then goes to the budget committee and that's usually me.
Unless you have an objection. Congratulations, you're. Okay, so I would entertain a motion.
I move that the governing body of the city of Halsey appoint and designate the city administrator to be the budget officer for the fiscal year of twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four.
Okay.
On a paper.
All right.
And I'll host. Motion carries. Item is approval of the budget calendar. Are there any major changes that you know of, Hillary, or?
No, it's very similar to last year except it's the calendar.
Sure. Yeah. So I want to entertain a motion on that.
I move that the governing body of the city of Halsey approve the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four budget calendar as submitted.
Second, all favor.
Fine.
Host. There are none. Motion carries. And the last item on the agenda is the ordinance twenty-twenty-two dash four-four-one. Prevention City of Halsey amending the Halsey Municipal Code, adding check for four-point-three-five cost recovery. And with that, I'm gonna just leave, stay away.
Um, there are no changes since the last draft that you saw. Um. Can I explain this a little bit last month? You want a summary again?
Were you present for that, Scott?
Yes.
And then if nobody wants a refresher, I would entertain a motion.
I move that the governing body of the city of Halsey adopt ordinance twenty-twenty-two dash four-four-one and ordinance of the city of Halsey amending the city or the Halsey Municipal.